We're ready? Let go, I just have a second. Okay. Calling to order the Monday, April 19th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Everybody here, everybody on, I think we just have Ms. Green on. How about Ms. Coakley? Ms. Green is not on yet. Okay. Would somebody just text Ms. Green and Ms. Coakley just to see if they're getting on? All right, so our second item is adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Okay, our second, second. Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Herterick and a second from Ms. Waters to approve the agenda. Presenting Ken and Julie will get us our information to vote. Hey, we're waiting on just a couple people to get in. We had two out of one, leaving into the other. What are we, what are we, are you doing now? Let's just go ahead and take a voice vote. And this is for approving the adopting the agenda, Ms. Herterick?
Yay.
Ms. Coakley? Yes. Ms. Waters? Yeah. Reverend Mack? I vote yes. Dr. Frazier, Dr. French?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a unanimous vote for adopting the agenda. Is everybody in there? All right. The next item is item 2A, which is personal, public comments in person. So, Ms. Waters?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Darby. We do have one person not here yet. Okay, we do have one online public comment that I will read. And I'll actually ask, I'll defer, I need to know what we do in the instance when the person isn't here. Do they get skipped or do we come back? That we don't, okay. So I'm going to read the one that we have submitted to us. And I can enlarge my screen. Okay. This comment was submitted by Ms. Jennifer Saunders about the vaccine e-learning day. Greetings. A large percentage of RV stall teachers are scheduled to receive their second shot vaccine shot Thursday, the 22nd, which will be an e-learning day for us. My recommendation is that the next day also be an e-learning day to allow for recovery time. As I had COVID earlier this year and was sick after my first shot, I anticipate having to take a sick day on the 23rd. I know I will not be the only one. Current research as well as anecdotal evidence suggests that the second shot commonly results in more side effects than the first. It seems better for teachers, staff, and students that this be an e-learning day. Thank you all the best, Jennifer Saunders, science teacher. That is all we have. Ms. Darby?
Thank you, Ms. Waters. The in-person person is not here. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is item 3A, superintendent's report. The first thing is the COVID-19 update.
Thank you. And I want to thank Maggie for operating the slides for us today. We really appreciate everything this St. James Field does for us. The COVID report was sent to board members last week. This particular slide has not changed since then. We are medium in the incidence rate, medium in the trend rate, and low in the percent positive rate for last week. We move on to the next slide then. This slide tracks COVID cases by week within our schools. The orange show the positive cases of staff. The blue shows the positive cases for students. You can see we had the off week for spring break and then the student cases are backed up. But staff infections had declined significantly over the past few weeks. So we hope that that, one hypothesis would be that that's an early indicator that the vaccines are beginning to work. Jeff will say a little bit more about vaccines in just a moment. The next slide simply reiterates that point that there were only a handful of positive cases among staff during the first two weeks of April. So we're hopeful that that's a good sign. Jeff, you want to take it from there?
Yes, ma'am. As noted in the public comments, we have vaccination day on the 22nd. We also have one on the 23rd that'll close out our remaining schools for their, for their second doses. We've had some pretty quick and rapid negotiations with medical partners to vaccinate students. It's, we've gotten some very good support from, from MUSC and now Federer at this time. We're hoping to be able to roll out vaccines for 16-year-olds and above with Pfizer starting next Monday, the 26th. We're looking at going to the schools so there'll be no change in school calendars. We'll look at issuing those immunizations, those shots, just like we've done other things with the students in the past. We, we're going to anticipate seeking parent parental consent for these vaccinations. We are looking into what is the possibility of doing that without parental consent. We've had some discussions with a number of individuals on that. But right now, that's what we're targeting is we'll put out parental consent requests toward the end of this week. And so we'll have a good number of those that are interested in proceeding next with that school, next with school by school. We have had discussions with MUSC and DHEC as recently as last Friday. There's been a lot of requests, I won't say a lot, there have been several requests from parents to stop wearing masks in schools. DHEC and MUSC still strongly support the continued use of masks in schools. Obviously, we have mask breaks set up for both meals and breaks themselves. There are still significant risks with the variants that are out in the public, unknowns with the variants out in the public, as well as the fact that we still have a lot of students that haven't been vaccinated as well. So that currently remains the plan to continue with mask wearing in schools. We've got a document posted on our website that we've shared with parents talking about or reviewing the risks of wearing masks. A lot of their requests come in where there's concern about carbon, carbon dioxide, concerns about breathing capabilities, other things of that nature. And we've got documents on there that have referenced studies from medical professionals regarding the safety of wearing, wearing masks. We are looking at individual plans for proms and graduation. I was a little optimistic with saying nearly all of them have been approved. Not all of them, nearly all of them. Let's say most of them are on track. But each school submits a prom plan, you know, graduation plan that are within the guidelines of the district. And those are reviewed on an individual basis to make sure that we're safe, that the events are safe for both the participants and the guests at those events.
Thank you, Mr. Burroway. Are there any questions about the COVID update? If not, I'll move on to the next very small item I had to mention.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The, the next item has to do with the board priorities and goals. It's just a reminder of the way that our responsibilities are sorted out in policy. And then the final slide shows you the, what we've done to try to keep working on the document that you approved last month. And the reason we, there should be a hard copy of that document at your place. It's the CCSD Promise document, your, your priorities, goals, in your words. Everything that's in blue font is approved by the board. So for those who are watching from home or looking at the slide that's on the screen, the board sets the priority and the goal. The district develops the strategies, which we share with the board and which can change over time as we find better approaches. The board agrees on what the outcomes would be to measure the particular goal. Then we figure out what metrics and measures will help report to you accurately about that outcome. And then we've added a section on the, to beef up the part on cost estimates. You've just finished a budget workshop. But the document that is refined and in your folder today and is in hard copy at your places is a document that we anticipate putting online and making live so that anyone who wants to see where we are with progress with a particular goal can look at it. And as your budget comes back to you, we'll be able to tie, Dr. Frazier, to your point, we'll be able to tie the particular budget request back to the way that we're hoping to be able to move forward with a priority or a goal. We share this with you today not for you to, to worry about it or to approve it. It, we haven't changed the words in the document. There are some places that still need to be built out that aren't finished. But sometimes when we change format from a version of the document that you saw the last meeting to the version of the document as we refine it, it's confusing to board members. So we just wanted to make sure that we keep in step with the board and that as you have time to look at this, if you have any concerns about this particular format, to let us know. Our communications department looked at a lot of different examples across the country from districts, trying to do the same kinds of things that we're doing with this promise of getting students on a grade level at certain, certainly every grade, but it's at key points throughout our system, putting in place the interventions that are necessary to bring students up to grade level, particularly when we've had the disruption in our system that COVID has created. And then promising the students who come through meeting those benchmarks that if they're prepared, Charleston County together will somehow figure out how to, how to invest in them one year after, at least one year after they leave us so that their future training or one year of college is taken care of. We need a document that everyone can refer to and track our progress with. So that's the purpose of this document. We wanted to share it with you and see if you have any concerns as we begin to move to format the goals in this fashion. That's it for the superintendent's report.
Does anybody have any questions about the, the performance?
I don't have any questions about the format, but we're not going to see or talk about these again until the first reading of the budget. So I had some questions about that, some of the items.
Okay.
So will there be any budget request in 21, 22 for the Charleston Promise? There's none down here? Is there an anticipation that we're going to see some cost requests in the 21, 22 budget?
Minimal. I think the ad hoc committee had a first preliminary, I had a preliminary meeting last week and has yet to refine the timeline activities, that sort of thing. But I, I think there would be minimal costs. For example, if board members and some community members go to look at two or three other places in the country that have tried something like this, there would be travel costs. And there would be one position, someone who is contracting with the district to help facilitate that work through the board so that the board has a staff person to work, to develop and to develop the concept and to arrange meetings with mayors, county and city councils, other entities.
Are you referencing the program director being hired in the 21, 22 budget?
This coming year, yes, ma'am. So I'm just giving you examples of the types of costs. There's a whole, in the overall scheme of things, will be insignificant, the cost of getting organized. But, but when I said the document's incomplete, that's the exact, that's a great example, the kind of thing I'm referring to.
And the only other thing is, two more things. One, it seems that we need to fill in the percentage growth goals before we start talking about first reading of the budget. It just, because those goals are going to determine how much work is required. So am I wrong on that? Should it be flipped that we're going to see the first reading of the budget before we're talking about percentage increases?
Well, you've established percentage increases, so those exist right now. What we don't have right now are the year-end assessments and the results from those. So there is a testing window that occurs at the end of May and beginning of year. So to answer your question, yes, you could either keep the percentages that you have already adopted, which may or may not be appropriate when we see where our students are at the end of this year, or you wait and, and defer the adoption of the budget till we get the state assessment results back. So I, I don't think that that's going to be practical. So we could go back though and fill in the percentages that you've already adopted so that it doesn't look as though you haven't set those targets.
Right. And then the last question, I thought that the UVA contract was a leadership development contract. Am I wrong? I thought it was developing leaders and bench strength.
I could be wrong, but Ms. Belchud, you want to talk about that bit?
Certainly. It, it's, it, it works with the leadership of the acceleration schools or subset for this year. And myself, Dr. Williams, Ms. Simmons, Jackie Haynes, who is the executive director, it's training us on a turnaround strategy. And then we meet with other districts across the country in the cohort program as we actually execute that in our district.
Some must have had it wrong. I thought, I thought this was a leadership development where we were developing teachers, developing future principals, et cetera. I know, I'm just asking for the answer to it. So it's not, is that what you're saying?
It's a turnaround support strategy. So it is developing the leadership and turnaround, but not, not developing new leaders.
Yeah.
Herter, any questions?
No questions.
Dr. French?
Yes, and I'd just like to mention that the timer was not being run correctly while Ms. Coakley was talking. It wasn't paused when answers, when answers were given.
I know.
So, um, I don't. I, I just have a follow-up based on one of your answers from Ms. Coakley. If the ad hoc committee met on this, on the Charleston Promise issue, why wasn't it properly noticed? All of our committees are supposed to be noticed and made available to the public.
So probably my statement was not exactly right. There was a phone call with the board chair and the staff member whom we, it, it possibly should have been noticed, Dr. French, but it was a phone call with the board chair, the staff member whom we hoped would help head up the effort. And the committee members were invited. It wasn't a formal meeting, but it was a, a phone call to talk about how we would get organized. So you could be technically correct, perhaps you should have noticed it if we didn't think about it as a meeting. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Frazier?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to take a look at the outcomes where you have Dr. Pulsoe, your performance and your percentages. Usually, when you're talking about the outcomes, that you do have a percentage in there. And I understand that you're waiting on the assessment, but for right now, do you have any indication and can we see what you envision that the percentages will be? Because right now it's incomplete.
The percentages are set and they existed for last year. They exist for this year. These are the percentages for next, a year from now that it's difficult to fill in because we don't know where our children will be at the end of this year. So we can go back and fill in the existing percentages if you'd like to. Certainly before we, before we, we put this online. You do have percentages that exist currently, Dr. Frazier. Because this document is intended for June of 2022, we don't yet know what those realistic target measures should be for our children until we find out where they are at the end of this year. And that's especially true because of the impacts of COVID. So if you'd like, we can easily share with you tomorrow the percentages that the board voted on that are existing.
I would sure like to see that.
We can easily share that.
All right. Reverend Mack, do you have any questions?
So, no questions. I just wanted to be clear, Dr. French, just to make, make sure that we're being transparent here. That conversation with the ad hoc committee that the superintendent had along with me was just to be clear in the direction in which the ad hoc committee is to move forward and to make sure that they have all the tools necessary to formulate within their meeting. So it was not an official discussion on how we move forward, but to give an overall of, of the direction of what this Charleston Promise will look like in, in essence, and the combination of, and the individuals that will be involved, the scale of work that is going to be taking place. So, and how we formulate the team to make sure that it have everything that they would need to move forward. So that was the basis of that conversation. So I just wanted to be clear that, that we're being transparent because we take, I take this and the board takes this very seriously, which includes yourself, of this promise or initiative moving forward for the Charleston area. So we want to make sure that, that all the tools that are there needed as Ms. Waters, Ms. Federer, and Ms. Coakley, who was a part of it also, will, will be engaging in this dialogue and then coming back to the full board. So, so that's what the, the content of that conversation was.
Okay, thank you for your clarification.
Yep.
All right, Ms. Waters?
Yes, I just have one question. I know that you mentioned some of this isn't quite built out, but the piece around laying in an equity measure or, or goal under each, I don't see one of the priority two or priority four yet. Are those forthcoming? I think it's the, the COVID-19 recovery plan and then the, the capital projects building program piece. And I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, in conversations, that it's getting built out.
I don't know that we had thought about explicitly stating that, but we, we easily could. For us, the COVID recovery plan is all about equity, the equitable attention to this, the supports that students need. And then it's, it would be easy to create an overlay in the golden coding before.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure, because I know the amendment was accepted in a motion at that meeting. So I just want to make sure we, it's explicit so we can't be dinged on it later.
Thank you.
So also, just so we can be clear and fairness to everyone's time, I think Dr. French made a, made a point early about the time and response. So if we can just pause when an answer is being given by staff, just to allow the appropriate time with the two-minute that a lot of board members, so it can be continued, then we'll make sure that we, so we can be consistent with that. So thank you for that observation.
Okay, any other questions on the superintendent's report? So there's some follow-up and y'all will follow up. Okay. Next items are Strategic Education Committee. Ms. Herter?
Thank you, Ms. Darby. We have four items on the strategic education agenda for today. First up is 4A, a recommendation for C. Williams North. Dr. Williams?
Great day, everyone. Great day, Chair Mack, Vice Chair Waters, board members, Dr. Pulsoe. We'd like to thank you all today for giving us an opportunity to present to you our recommendations for the configuration of Middle, the D-10 or West Dashie for the 2021, 2022 school year. And with that being said, we have Principal Kevin Smith and Mai Tate Porter with us here today. And they're going to share with you some of their recognitions, their successes, celebrations, and also some feedback from a few parents, staff, and scholars. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Principals Kevin Smith and Mai Tate Porter with Ms. Porter going first.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Williams. I hope you all are having a wonderful day. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak a little bit about the success that we're seeing this year with the current setup of the north campus and the south campus for C. Williams Middle School. Next slide.
Can we maybe turn her volume up?
Hold on one moment, can we, Maggie, can we get her? Ms. Porter, if you can speak louder into your ear.
Sure. I'd like to talk to a little bit about the teaming model that we have. We have a traditional middle school model, very appropriate for sixth grade on our campus with four core teams, each team consisting of an ELA, math, science, and social studies teacher. This year, due to COVID, we had things set up a little bit differently than we would in a traditional year with our students staying in place and our teachers rotating from room to room. This allowed us the opportunity to have 16 to 18 scholars in each room and the teachers rotating to rooms and then the students go out to their encore or related arts classes. We had some additional opportunities this year with scholars to provide after-school enrichment and tutoring. And we also had a creative writing club, anime club, girls on the run, scholars who code. And then during the day, we have situ, which is success is the only option for scholars to attend around their lunchtime. And then we also have a new coaches' corner mentoring opportunity here on the north campus that we've opened up for about 25 of our male students who work with our coaches and our male teachers. And they do that twice a month. Next slide. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the celebrations and recognitions that we have so far this year. We were awarded the MSLC Middle School Rocks Award back in the fall, which was an awesome opportunity. It's, it's an award that's given through the middle school learning community and we received it for the first time in this building, which was great. We had the News Two Cool Principal Award. And I always say it's not a principal award, it's a school award because we all worked very, very hard just all year just to, to bring some amazing things into this building. And so it's not a principal award, but it's really a team effort school award. And so we're very proud of that. We have an improved school culture over last year. Definitely we've seen tremendous gains in that area. And then we're very proud that we have 16 of our teachers that are involved in the University of South Carolina Cohorts. Next slide. To give you all a little bit of the feedback that we receive, you all, you all should have a slide of this with, with all of the details. But a few of our stakeholders shared feedback with us on the sixth grade concept. And our overall consensus was that we received was continuing with the sixth grade campus model would be a great choice for next school year. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Smith at this time, and he could talk a little bit about seventh and eighth grade.
Good afternoon. I know while we're getting set up for our slide, I just want to thank you all for allowing us this opportunity to present. And thank you, Ms. Porter, Dr. Williams, for your introductions. Thank you to you all. And let's go ahead and just share a little bit about C. Williams, the middle school, south campus, where we serve seventh and eighth graders. Next slide. So I just want to share a little bit about a high-level structure of our school. As you know, in middle schools, teaming is a very important model to the middle school, middle school model. And so with our structure, I just want to show you this graphic really quickly so you can see how our structure here at C. Williams is set up at the south campus. So each grade level is made up of what we call two houses. And each of those houses is made up of two teams. This is interesting because, again, with the teaming model, being so unique this year with having two grade levels with more students, we had to find a way to make sure that we continued with the teaming model that is good for middle school student, middle-level adolescents, but also find a way to make sure that in a big school, you know, we shrink it down into a smaller school. And that's what we were able to do with the inclusion of the houses. With the teams, because of the structure, we have about the same amount of students on the teams as we did in the previous years when we were 650 students with the sixth, seventh, and eighth. So we have really created a great structure to support our learners. This is also duplicated with our eighth graders. Next slide. So a few celebrations for C. Williams, south campus. This is one that we are very proud of. C. Williams is designated as a school to watch through the National Forum to Accelerate Middle Grades Reform. That is a very, very big deal. It is a national recognition that you must maintain each year. This year in this campus, this campus is, is beautiful. The facilities are something we all can be proud of. And the great thing about this school is that every elementary and middle school student in District 10 will have the opportunity to attend this campus and participate and see the features, experience the updated, updated facilities, the technology. It's just a great building and I think that we can all be proud of that in CCSD. We were recently featured actually in Carolina Bay Neighbors Magazine as a part of this community, which we are. And we are very excited about what students will be able to experience. All of our seventh and eighth grade students have access to the performing arts, career technology education, and other exploratory courses. So again, now all of our students have access and we don't have to worry about who does and doesn't get access to these great opportunities. So again, now all of our students have access and we don't have to worry about who does and doesn't get access to these great opportunities. We also have created an accelerated pathway for students who are prepared in seventh grade to take Algebra One honors. And then they will also be able to take geometry honors in eighth grade. And we are proud of one of our very own, Ms. Carithana Samuel, who has now won the Regional Spelling Bee two years in a row. We are so proud of her and just so glad that she hung in there even after she couldn't go to DC to participate in the National Bee, that she came back and she's setting herself up to have that opportunity again. Next slide, please. So a little bit of high level feedback, we kind of boiled this down just to give you some pluses and deltas about this configuration. So you'll see that there are more pluses than deltas. Uh, one, we, the staff members and parents here actually echoed what Ms. Porter heard for the sixth grade campus, which is this allows the sixth graders to be in an environment that is more developmentally responsive to them. Also, the building space, because of the building space, this this configuration has allowed us to really not be overcrowded. But allows all students to have the opportunity to experience the building without trying to make too many concessions because of of size. So there really wouldn't be physical space in this building to house sixth graders. So this has been great. The biggest thing I will say has been equity, 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 equity. District Ten has overcome inequities that were created by having an attended zone for two middle schools. And this is unique to District Ten, as I thought through and as you really think about it. You, District Ten is is a size that allows for this type of configuration. And what we no longer have is the perceptions or realities or of of students that haves and have nots, or this school is better than that school. Because now all of our students get to experience school together. And from our students, this is interesting, the six, they said the sixth graders are fine where they are. You could think about seventh and eighth grade personalities. When you ask them, hey, how do you feel about sixth graders not being here? Uh, do you miss them? No, they are fine where they are. That is what some of our students said. Uh, now some of the deltas, though, and I'll be honest. Sixth graders do, they do have a different personality and a different energy. And so if you're used to being in a middle school with sixth graders. You know, you don't have that energy that's in the building, that wide eyed energy. Hey, we're fresh out of elementary school. Um, so that is a delta there. And another delta that we saw, and I think we all anticipated this being the biggest concern for the community. Was the logistics of having students in sixth grade and then a student in seventh, eighth grade, maybe a student at the high school, student in the elementary school. So the logistics of that extra building, so to speak, was a concern. But we found a way to really overcome that by providing much more of a window of time for students to be dropped off on one campus and dropped off at the other. And so that really has not been a barrier for for our students and our families. Next slide. And that actually concludes our presentation from C. Williams Middle School, South Campus.
So thank you again to Principal Smith and Porter. And so with that being said, I want you all to know, first and foremost, that when we were going over that presentation, the same response that Mr. Smith got when he read with the scholars, that is what I did when he presented it to me. I thought that was quite hilarious. They say, they're fine where they are. So. But that being said, as you all can see in front of you, our recommendation for this is, uh, we, uh, first, the current configuration of middle schools and D ten to remain as is with us, uh, moving forward next year with that committee or focus group to talk about the future of middle schools and D ten.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, Principal Porter and Principal Smith. We open up for questions. Ms. Coates, we'll start with you.
No.
No question. Ms. Waters?
No question.
Uh, Ms. Darby?
I would just want to compliment you guys that y'all made this happen really fast during COVID. And you know, there was lots of people supporting it and lots of people who weren't. And it sounds like you really made it a success. So thank you.
Senator Preger?
Yes. I received some feedback from some parents who have some concerns that they needed to be involved in the process of how this configuration is going to be taking place. And could you tell this body how we plan to engage more parent participation and have their input? Due to COVID, they said that they wanted to come in and talk to the board about how they feel about it. So how are we going to allow for that?
Okay, are you referring to what I stated earlier in reference to us putting a focus group or committee together on next year to talk about the future of middle schools?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. That's going to happen on next year, and that'll be led by myself and Mr. Marory. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Well, you you could provide those some names to Dr. Williams, the people who are interested, if that would help.
Okay, is that going to, will they have any input into the configuration of both schools or what would that involve, Dr. Williams?
Well, when we first approached this situation, we had the intentions on this year of having that conversation to discuss the future of middle schools with D ten. But due to COVID and us transitioning kids back to school in person, and we did that a number of times this year, that was our focus. So with that being said, um, as I stated in the recommendation, our goal is to on next year engage those stakeholders so we can talk about the future of middle school, because the conversation that was supposed to occur this year was to talk about the future of middle school and D ten, apologies. So.
Is that all you have, Dr. Preger?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. French?
No question.
Ms. Green?
Um, no questions, just ditto what Ms. Darby said to the the school, really proud of what you guys are doing.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Ms. Coakley's not on. Is that correct? Reverend Mack?
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you to both principals for the great job that you have done and the initiative and with COVID and with the transition. And I look forward to supporting this effort moving forward as we're about to cast our vote. Thank you.
I agree.
Ms. Herter?
I happily motion to support the recommended action.
Do we have a second?
Second. Can you just restate where we are?
Okay, we have gotten a motion from Ms. Coates and a second from Ms. Waters to move forward the current configuration of C. Williams South and North. Uh, and a focus group will be put into place for twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school term.
Um, well, of course. No, no, that's that's next year, right? Twenty one, twenty two school term.
Yes, excuse me.
Yep, so the 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 motion is for next school year to continue as they are. And then in that school year, next school year, they'll put a focus group together to look at the whole, all middle schools, West Ashley, and then come back with some recommendations.
Oh, great.
So.
Okay, sounds like the motion has been made. In second, if you have a question, I'm a better chance to question.
Yeah, I guess.
What's your question?
Because now we have the motion, but suddenly the vote popped up, but we haven't called for discussion yet.
Yeah, she, that's what I just did.
Yeah.
She just asked.
Can you come back to me?
Okay.
Do we have any additional questions?
I guess since the motion wasn't on the public side of the agenda, I wonder if we could just read it out for everybody.
Sure.
Nice. Dr. and Ms. Herter, do you want to read it or? So it's now off my screen.
I I can read it real quick. Motion to continue with the current configuration for middle schools in D ten with sixth grade scholars housed on the C. Williams North Campus and seventh and eighth graders housed on the C. Williams South Campus until a committee can be formed during the twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty two school year to discuss the future configuration for middle school scholars in D ten.
Thank you.
So I want to clear on the motion.
Yep, everybody clear? Okay, everybody can vote. With a lot of, most people do. Julie, are you waiting on anybody? Would you like to do a voice vote? Ms. Green, would you like to do a voice vote? Okay, let's let's go ahead and go.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I, um, the the motion is up, but I can't. Um, the opportunity to vote has not presented itself, but yes, I vote, um, yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll, Julia, put you in.
Motion's been approved. Thank you. Next up is item four B, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one Virtual Academy Options K eight and Ms. Felcher.
Yes, thank you very much. As a reminder, just to put this in context, we said we would come back to the board after asking for waivers to be more explicit about what we're asking for and what our plans are for virtual instruction. Particularly after we'd surveyed families to have a sense of the scale of the need and what the level of interest is. So our, today, what we're going to do is go through an update and what that interest has been, what our current plan is. We are asking for the board to approve a partnership with the other four districts who have already signed. And that's Dorchester, two, Berkeley. Thank you, ma'am. I knew I was going to say it wrong. This is where I look like I'm new to the community and I don't want to. With the other four districts who have already signed on in terms of the collaboration. Um, Ms. Rivers will go over this. And then we're also going to be explicit about how we're going to be using the waivers within Virtual Academy just so that we come back to the board as was asked. Um, I'd like to introduce LaShawna Rivers, who works on on our team and learning services and has led all of our Virtual Academy efforts to date.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Reverend Dr. Mack, Chairman, School Board, Dr. Pulso Way and attending audience. Again, my name is LaShawna Rivers, and I currently serve as a Director of Instructional Programs. And I've also had the pleasure of serving as Principal of our CCSD K through eight Virtual Academy in this this current year. In addition, I also serve as a district member on the Virtual Online Learning Leaders Group. The purpose of our presentation today is to just really to take a moment and reflect on our current experiences and provide an overview of the collaborative shared service model that we are proposing to provide a high quality K through eight virtual option for interested families during the twenty one, twenty two school term. Slide please. Our presentation will float in the following format. We'll take a look at where we are now and where we, what we're proposing moving forward. Provide an overview of our key share, excuse me, the K eight shared service full time virtual program. Provide an overview of the nine through twelve supplemental programs, K through twelve technical assistance. And then we'll summarize the overall benefits of this partnership. Slide please. So if we can take a moment and just reflect on the twenty twenty one school term. This year, we were able to offer face to face, adhering to the CDC safety guidelines. We were able to offer a temporary remote option, which is mostly managed at the school level. And we also offered a full time K through eight virtual program for our scholars, which is managed centrally by a CCSD designated staff member with me serving as principal. Our overall goal, as we transition to twenty one, twenty two, is to return as many students back to face to back, face to face as possible. Adhering to our CDC guidelines, we are proposing that we also offer interested families the opportunity to submit an application for participation in a high quality, full time K through eight virtual program. Slide please. The slide that you see there displays the number of students that we currently serve in this full time, in our current full time Virtual Academy. We currently serve three hundred and fifty three students. Part, however, I need to mention that in August, we started with almost seven hundred. But as we transitioned from quarter to quarter with more families feeling comfortable with returning back to face to face, we began to see those numbers drop. But currently to date, we are serving three hundred and fifty three students. And you see the breakdown by grade level at the bottom of that slide. The larger bulk of our students are served in grades six through eight, but we are serving up quite a few students in our K through five grades as well. Slide please. On March the twenty third, we provided families with the opportunity to indicate their intentions for the twenty one, twenty two school year. These are the results that we received. Families were allowed to submit their requests up to April the eleventh. After April, April the eleventh, we pulled the data and broke it down by grade level so we can begin to plan for those families in the upcoming year. So at the bottom of that slide, you see the breakdown per grade level, starting with kindergarten, moving all the way through eighth grade. And again, you'll see and you'll note that our higher number of requests are in grades six through eight. However, we do have some students, some some requests for K through five. Um, you also note that these numbers look very similar to the slide that was previously shown. With us remaining pretty steady as it relates to K through five and also six through eight. And also want to note, as I said earlier, we started the year with a much larger number of students than we're currently serving. And they were in the middle grades. But as we progressed throughout the year, most middle schoolers begin to realize that uh, independent work and self guarded asynchronous work was not the right fit for them. So we start to see a lot of our numbers drop in grades six through eight. Uh, to the point where they're a little bit more manageable now. Uh, and we feel that we're capturing the students that are a better fit for this type of learning environment. Slide please. So the proposed collaborative shared service model uh, takes into account or focuses on several goals. The first being making sure that we provide a quite high quality K through eight virtual program for our students. And that we begin to collaborate across districts so that we can harness our collective expertise uh, to better serve our families. I think every district at the start of it all had to had to do it alone. Uh, and had to really figure it out, uh, because we were in the midst of it and planning at the same time. And didn't necessarily have the time to strategically plan as we would any other year. Um, but through this proposed partnership, we'd be able to collaborate with with other districts who've been here before. Um, and have experienced different levels of success. Uh, we'll be able to share our stories and better plan for those families that are interested for the twenty one, twenty two school term. Also, through this partnership, we are hoping to provide a robust catalog of supplemental resources. Uh, if you know anything about curriculum instruction, it takes a lot of grit and deep work to build out curriculum. Um, and it's not a project that you could do alone. Uh, but if we were to share our collective expertise and our staff members, we'd be able to build out courses that could be shared across districts uh, to to leverage the work. Also, the technical assistance. If I could reflect just on this year, the support needed to make sure that a online program, learning program is of high quality and meets the needs of all students. It it cannot work without the proper technical assistance in place. And I speak specifically to programs, national organizations like Quality Matters that put a stamp of approval on our courses to make sure that they're in line or in line with our state and national standards. So this is a, this is an overview of the goals as it relates to this shared model that we're proposing here today. Slide please. So in essence, as we move into twenty one, twenty two, as a district, we're looking to offer two options for our families. Two virtual options for us, our families, I should say, a full time K through eight serving students in a blended model of asynchronous and synchronous work. Um, and I'll be the first to say that I lean more towards a virtual program that provides synchronous synchronous instruction to students every day. A lot of students struggle when online programs are completely asynchronous. So we're proposing that ours takes into consideration that that synchronous instruction is very important. And that we have a a fair breakdown of the amount of synchronous versus asynchronous instruction that is available for our students. The other part of our virtual option would be that we continue to provide a a plethora of options for our students enrolled in enrolled in nine through twelve. Um, which looked very much so like what we were offering prior to the pandemic. Where our students were allowed to participate in courses through Virtual SC, um, through our own personal franchise with Virtual SC. Uh, Edge Annuity, um, and other options that we're able to provide. Slide please. So if we can look at this collaborative partnership in three major categories, the first being us continuing to offer a full time virtual program for students in K through eight, very similar. for students in K-8, very similar to the model that we provided this past year, with once again, a stamp of approval from Quality Matters, which ensures that our online courses are aligned to the national standards for quality. Also, if we could just collaborate to share the lift, share the lift of implementing such a program, managing the costs, and leveraging our purchasing power as it relates to supplemental resources that are needed to make sure that online learning programs are successful. Also, this K-8, we'd hire selected teachers that would provide, once again, a blend of instruction in an asynchronous and synchronous model. Those teachers would be hired by that leadership team, would share the cost for any professional learning offerings that our staff needed. We quickly realized, again reflecting on our current situation and past experience, our teachers need support with digital learning, how to engage students in an online learning platform because it looks quite different from instruction being provided in a brick-and-mortar. Also, students will remain enrolled in their home school. This would be a program so students remain connected to their home school, but would also be enrolled in the program so they'd be able to take advantage of any opportunities offered, specifically speaking to extracurricular activities from the home school. Slide please. The second bucket, again, or second category relates to our students in grades 9th through 12, that we continue to provide supplementary programs. But the strength in this is that this collaborative partnership would allow us to cross lines where we can't offer a course. We'd be able to partner with a district that could fill the need for students. So it would present more opportunities for us to fill the schedules for kids, to meet the needs of kids. Also, it would allow us to expand our partnership with Virtual SC. As you know, we are currently partnered with Virtual SC. We are a franchise district. We became one two years ago. And through that partnership, we are able to offer courses on a rolling enrollment, which allows for flexibility for our students that need courses at various points throughout the year. It allows us to, I won't say manipulate, but to have some flexibility with hard deadlines for students to complete courses. So it opened up more opportunities for our students. So this would expand that franchise. And if you can think about it like this, Berkeley, for example, Berkeley County had courses that we needed. We'd be able to expand our franchise to be able to take advantage of some of the courses that they're offering for our students. And once again, and I can't stress the importance of online course for it being stamped with this golden seal of approval by Quality Matters, which ensures that all of our courses are appropriately aligned to state standards. Slide please. And the technical assistance that could be provided through this partnership, making sure that, once again, that our teachers receive the professional learning that's needed to ensure success for our students. Slide please. So in summary, benefits of us being allowed to participate in this collaborative shared model. Our students remain connected to their district home schools. That would provide us the opportunity to benefit from a partnership or a contract with Quality Matters. Again, the ability to pool our collective expertise in one place to make sure that we're sharing the lift. Slide please. At the end of the presentation, you'll note that you see several documents. At the start of the presentation, I mentioned that I was a district member representing Charleston County in our Virtual Online Leaders Group. And this is a group that I started to participate with back in August because the main goal was to make sure that every district had the tools needed to make sure that we could get through this year. So this planning came along before we began to think about what our options would be for 21-22. And so you'll see in these last two slides, some of the documents that came out of that strategic planning that we were able to engage ourselves in over the last four or five months. In that time, we were able to draft a strategic plan for a program and what it would look like being pushed out in 21-22. We were able to draft, and I believe you received a draft of the parent guide, which I have to say to you, as the principal of our current academy, I wish I had back in August. And I'm sure our parents wish I had to give them back in August. But the amount of time that can be put into making sure that we appropriately roll out a program to ensure student success, it has been priceless over the last four or five months. And then you'll see a student success rubric because we needed to support our families so that we make sure that they're making the right decisions for their children so that they clearly understand what an online learning program looks like and what it takes to be successful in one. They need that guidance. And so we were able to draft, and I take no credit in doing it myself, the collaboration of the districts has been powerful. The amount of knowledge that's been brought to the table to create these documents to make sure that every district is successful moving forward. And then on the last page, you'll see several, slide please. On the last page, you'll see several other documents or slides or pictures there, images there. The first being a school counselor guidance document that I have to say is needed for counselors to be able to sit with families before they sign on to enroll in such a program to make sure they're clear on the expectations and the supports that are in place for them. And then you see several other things there to the end, again, to support any district enroll out in moving forward. And regardless of whether or not we continue to offer this because of the pandemic, we had been offering this prior to the pandemic. Every district has a virtual program in place, so supports like this are needed, regardless of why we're here today asking for it. So that concludes everything that I had to share up to this point about where we are and what we're proposing. I open the floor for any questions that you might have.
Before we do that, Ms. Rivers, I'd love it if Ms. Roberts could also just update the board because we said we would come back to the board on what we were using the waivers for within Virtual Academy. So that's what this would be. Ms. Roberts provided a comprehensive overview of all the waivers in the board brief that was published last week, but also within the board docs right now.
Good afternoon, Dr. Reverend Mack, Vice Chair, Ms. Waters, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Postaway. The board previously approved waiver requests for CCSD's submission to the South Carolina Department of Education and the State Board of Education. In the board brief and in your packet, you have been provided those formal requests for the waiver submissions, as well as the specific information about each of the waiver requests, along with the rationale for their use. Specifically today, we wanted to take a moment to highlight the requests that would directly relate to our virtual programs. So for waivers that are related to Regulation 43205, which is the Administrative and Professional Personnel Qualifications, Duties, and Workloads, that has to do with allowing for the ability for a teacher to teach more than four different courses and the flexibility of the scheduling of time within a school day. Both of these provide virtual programs with the ability to staff according to student and teacher needs and to allow students to be able to take advantage of learning opportunities, not only inside the school building, but also outside the setting of a brick-and-mortar school building. For waivers related to Regulation 42234, which is defined program grades 9th through 12 and graduation requirements, allowing proficiency or students' mastery of content and standards to be used to award course credit rather than relying on instructional minutes observed inside a face-to-face classroom is also necessary for operating in the virtual program environment. These waiver requests that I just spoke about have actually previously been approved at the state level for South Carolina districts. CCSD is also requesting an additional waiver related to Regulation 43205. That's the Administrative and Professional Personnel Qualifications, Duties, and Workloads. CCSD is requesting the State Board of Education approve the same parameters for instructor loads or class sizes for its virtual programs that are currently approved for the state's virtual program, Virtual SC, because these class size requirements were designed specifically with virtual programs in mind. The parameters that virtual programs outside of the state's program, like those that are run by districts, are currently required to adhere to the parameters that were designed for in-person classrooms, not for virtual classrooms. This request is expected to move forward from the State Department of Education to the State Board of Education for consideration. The state will inform CCSD in writing when or if the waivers requested are approved. And again, you'll find all the detailed information, including specific language found in the regulations and that specific rationale and the intended use of the waivers broken down in your board packets. Okay, I conclude.
Ms. Roberts, would you mind sharing that we opted not to apply for two waivers for Virtual Academy that we had presented to the board previously? Would you just clarify those two situations?
There were two of the requests that we previously discussed. One related to certification, and then the other related to adept. After working with the State Department, we understand that these are not requirements that they are able to waive for us. So we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. And before we take questions, just to sort of make sure I'm laying out, the reason we're asking the board for approval on the partnership, from our perspective, we believe that allows us to have better purchasing power across the larger number of students served across the four districts that are going to be participating. And to make sure that I'm clear about that because I wasn't before, that would be Berkeley, Dorchester 4, and Collington that have already agreed. And then obviously, if we agree. The advantage is also is allow us to reach economies of scale for programming and staffing costs and that we share our professional learning cost across a broader range. We estimated that we paid this year within our budget out of ESER funds about $2,500 per pupil in direct costs. However, there were a lot of administrative costs that were reallocated for other parts of this. For example, Ms. Rivers said she serves as the principal of the Virtual Academy. She also has a full-time job where she manages our gifted and talented efforts, our efforts across the board with all of our digital learning widely defined and many other important projects. We also had to pull in other adults, as you know, it was all hands on deck this year. So we had several allocations from the Department of Exceptional Education that were actually teaching and accommodating IEPs through the Virtual Academy. So right now, and again, we have not yet committed. Projected cost is $3,200 per pupil, all in with administrative costs at the Low Country Consortium. My point of view on this is this is generally going to be about the same cost. We would also put this money towards COVID recovery funds, whether it's ESER or some other source. About the same, but the advantages will have opportunities to have more courses offered, a higher quality of course, and it allows someone like Ms. Rivers and other staff members who have been deployed towards Virtual Academy to be redeployed for us to really focus in on the COVID recovery priorities that this board has set. So that's the advantage of the partnership from our perspective and why we're asking the board for permission for that.
Thank you guys so much for such a comprehensive report. We'll go to questions now, Ms. Coats.
Come back to me.
Okay, Ms. Waters.
I don't have any questions. Just thank you so much for this, and I definitely think it's important to get people like, you know, everyone on your staff who's doubling efforts to not be doing that kind of workload or handling that kind of workload.
Ms. Garvey?
I don't. Ditto what Ms. Waters said.
Dr. Frazier?
Yes, I have a question about the total cost of the program and the length of time that it took to bring this to the board. Usually, when there is a program presented for permission to implement a program, that we have more time to take a look at what it all involves and costs associated with it and not just to see that.
Well, again, the budget has not yet been brought to the board for this coming year. So this is the projection. And last year, we did, we do know that we put out pocket expenses of $2,500 for things like our Florida Virtual Contract, the investments that we made in Canvas. That was covered not by general operating funds, but by ESER funds. Now, we do think we're going to, we did, however, reallocate staff, and that was across the board, whether it was for Virtual Academy or other places. And we are still, we've been in conversations for the last few months and planning, trying to make sure that we're capitalizing across all the districts. And what have we learned this year, what didn't, and what do we want to do better for next year, which is part of what went into this planning?
What I'm actually seeing is that I just don't see a complete program, all of the working parts. I understand that you want us to commit to forming a partnership with several other districts, but I just don't see a plan in place with a budget of what it's going to cost taxpayers. And so until that's done, I don't know how we're going to move forward.
Well, the next step after we approve the partnership would be for us to have a more formal plan. At this point, we can't come back with that detailed level. And again, the budget has not yet been approved for the next fiscal year.
Dr. French?
Yes. So first of all, thank you, Ms. Rivers, for your presentation. And you mentioned several documents in the appendices. Neither your presentation or the appendices were provided in our board packet that I'm able to find. So would definitely like to look at those in more detail. I appreciated your presentation. It does bring a lot more of understanding of what we're trying to work on. I'm trying to make sure I understand. So this year, we basically have done this, correct? And so next year, I want to do it again. And it sounds like you're saying that the same personnel we used this year, we hope to use next year or not?
Not necessarily. We would work with the other four districts. So our teachers who are currently teaching Virtual Academy have a contract with Charleston County. If they're interested, and you give us permission to partner with Low Country Consortium, they have the opportunity to apply for those positions, of which there will be as much as we've got plus more because of the scale of what we're offering. But the idea here is we're getting teachers applying across all four districts for those positions, which from there, we will be hiring. So we're part of the interview committee, as would be every other district that's involved. What's different is that right now, Ms. Rivers, as well as other people on her team, people on the exceptional education team, and some other staff across the system have been allocated towards Virtual Academy just to make the trains run on time. Once we get the project up and running, it will be managed through the Low Country Consortium and the team that's hired to lead this cross-county Virtual Academy, which allows us to use our staff on the priorities that we've set out in the board priorities.
So would we be able to continue to, so for instance, if a Charleston County teacher wants to apply to the Virtual Program, would they remain a Charleston County employee but they would be doing the virtual work through the consortium?
That's right, they would keep their contract here.
Okay, great. So it would be like the transfer within the district. Okay, that's good stuff. I may have another question.
I'll come back around.
Dr. French, if I could add to Ms. Belcher's response. I will say that they are similar, but the distinct difference that I see, and I think that my team has done a wonderful job, given the resources and the time we've had. I think we've put together a quality program that I think the district and parents would be very proud of. But the distinct difference would be that you'd have an administrative staff that's completely dedicated to this program, which is what it would need. As I mentioned earlier, my dual role. I do have an assistant principal, but I did not specifically have a data clerk. I did have a wonderful online learning counselor who stepped in to that role for me. And I have a wonderful online learning coordinator who also stepped in to take on some of the responsibilities. So that's one distinct difference that I see. And I also mentioned earlier, the strategic planning. You know, if we could go back, I think we'd do a lot of things differently now that we know. But the strategic planning and the detail that's been put into place to roll out this program, I think it would better serve our students. I don't think that we've in any way didn't provide our students with the best we could this year. But if we could think about how we could get better and do a better job of serving them, what's been done around that strategic planning would be really beneficial for them.
Do we, just one more. Do we happen to have estimates from the other districts that want to participate and how many students they think would be attending?
The only district that I know of right now who's... The only district that I know of right now who's, who's submitted any type of preliminary numbers is Greenwood 52. And I believe they're, they're a smaller district, so I know their numbers are only maybe less than 100 in taking into account our potential numbers, but I do not know numbers for Berkeley County or Dorchester Two or Four at this time.
I'll come back if you have any additional questions. Ms. Green?
I just want to, a, a great presentation. I, I wanted to clarify the, the districts that are, are part of the consortium. Dorchester Two, Dorchester Four, Berkeley, Charleston, and Colliton, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Coats?
And Greenwood 52. Ms. Guys, when we talked about the number of people who had submitted interest of students that would be in the Virtual Academy, Ms. Rivers, you said Greenwood 52. Are they part of the consortium?
Greenwood 52 is partnering.
So, okay. Greenwood 52 is not part of the consortium, but there are some, Greenwood 52 is an example of a small district that wants to purchase seats if they are available once our students are served.
Concept. That's pretty cool. So then I guess my only question would be, there was a slide that's, and I think the, I think the program is fantastic. And I, any way that we can keep virtual students in the system is certainly providing those choices and options that we have always said. There was a slide that you had that referenced governed by the leadership team was the exact sentence you had put on there. And I want to make sure with everything through locally elected boards, Teacher Dismissal and Retention Act, who governs the teachers? Who disciplines the teachers? Who decides what professional development the teachers get? And do you, have you thoroughly thought that out to your end game? And I'm sorry, the cameraman is directing this. All the way through to the, to the end game of the worst-case scenario, have you planned this out that everyone clearly understands? I don't have a concern with my teacher, my child's teacher. I know who to call. To the fact that you have a concern with the teacher, you know your role in being able to address that concern. That's, that's the only thing, and you're in a unique industry that has a lot of laws that govern that, a whole lot of words. I want to make sure y'all run that through all the appropriate legal.
Yes, I, yes, I understand. The part, with the partnership, it would be led or there would be a principal or a director that supervises it. There would be an admin team. Each district is also responsible for having a coordinator or a representative or a point of contact, so to speak, that engages in conversation or remains connected to our students that are being served in the program. I'll defer to Dr. Postaway if she wants to add anything to that.
No, I think you answered it sufficiently. I, I think the term governing board wouldn't be in the sense that this board governs. It would be a coordinating board across, meaning that there's a representative that does the work that LaShawna has described from each of the districts who get together and then make recommendations back through the channels to their local boards if a decision.
And I have to apologize. When I said governed, I'm not talking about board governance. I'm talking about employment and employer-employee governance.
Right.
So if you've got a teacher in another district teaching Charleston County students, who is that teacher accountable to for their performance and execution?
That immediately to the principal, who, one principal who will be in charge of the entire operation among all the districts. And that principal then connects back through the appropriate person in the district that has hired the teacher. And that's why Ms. Roberts indicated that, that, that adept still applies.
That's what I was going to ask. Is this principal executing the adept on those teachers?
That, that principal will be qualified to do that. Whether that principal actually does it or the district does it will depend on the coordinate on the desires of that particular district. Thank you.
I have one question, then I'll go back around to the group. Ms. Rivers, how will we engage potential content partners?
That's a great question. So this year, we outsourced with specifically Florida Virtual to serve as a foundation for our content. I, I can't speak to what content they're specifically thinking about implementing for the 2122. It could potentially be what we're currently using. But regardless of the content selected, there's going to have to be some customization because nothing is 100% aligned. And so I suspect that the sooner the better in deciding, one, and when it's deciding that they, they bring, they hire and bring the teachers in so that there can be some customization to ensure alignment with our state standards.
One follow-up question on that. Will it be an RFP process? Will this be something that is decided with all the superintendents?
I'm assuming it's going to be something decided with the superintendents. Yes.
Thank you. And we'll go back around.
I would simply add to that, that it, it will be existing content or content that is developed by the teachers who are paid to develop it through the Quality Matters Standards. We would not be paying any staff members at consortium to develop content, for example.
Thank you. Ms. Waters?
I just wanted to make the motion. I move that we approve the Charleston County, or our school board entering into a partnership with the Low Country Education Consortium, along with the other Low Country districts, to offer high-quality K-8 Virtual Academy and supplement our 9 through 12 course, course offering.
Second.
Do we have any additional questions, Ms. Coats?
No, I would ask that this not be on the potential consent agenda. Would y'all, would the makers of the motion agree to that?
I, I will wait and see. If it gets a nine vote, we can, yeah, we don't.
Okay, so you won't add that to the motion that you would like it to be on the regular?
I'm not going to just vote, see.
Reverend Mack, I got sidetracked. I apologize.
That's all right. No problem at all. I was gonna, I was going to make a comment after the motion has been taken in anyway, so, but no worries. So, thank you, Ms. Rivers and Ms. Roberts, for your in-depth detail and breakdown of the presentation. It was well-presented. Questions were well-received. Thank you so much. I do believe that this is a, a partnership that I look forward to with entering into because I believe we need to make sure that we provide the necessary and learning environment for our students. So thank you so much for providing us this detailed information on today.
Thank you.
Ms. Hederick, I would like staff to know that I support this. I'll have to vote no in order for it to be on the open session. And that's because of some meetings that have been arranged for me later this week outside of the district. But that I supported, I just want to get through those meetings in case they bring in questions from the other districts.
Dr. Frazier? We're still having a question. Yes. Dr. French?
Yes, so you, so there's going to be a principal, but it's not a school. Is that correct?
Sorry, ma'am. I couldn't hear your question. Please tell me again.
There's going to be a principal, but it is not a school. Is it a program or a school?
It's a program. It's a virtual academy similar to like how we structure early college high school in that the students are still enrolled at their homeschool, but they attend early college high schools as a program.
Okay, but this is a full-time program for K through eight. So that's, I'm glad there's going to be a principal. Who will be the employer of the principal?
Depends on where the principal came from.
The district the principal comes from?
I actually don't know the answer to that. Ms. Rivers, do you know the answer?
Well, then, that's okay if you don't know the answer yet, but we'll need to find out the answer before we can consider it. I, I can answer that partially. The superintendents have gotten to the place with planning that we can't go any further until we know how many districts are involved. And so I will say principal may be a technical term. It will be a director, a leader. Because this is a program, it definitely is not a school. We want those students to be able to stay enrolled in their homeschool. So this has to be a program. Right. Okay, and I agree with Ms. Coats. There are logistical things about where do students file grievances, where do teachers file grievances? You know, those are things that are important to consider in this, in this. And I'd like to know more about how the leadership team will be selected. Also, I see, yes, you brought, provided the document where the superintendents all signed it. Are we the first board that this has been brought to of the districts that are considering it? I, I don't know how the other superintendents arranged with their boards to make their decisions. Okay, I just thought you might know since you guys are coordinating on all this. And I can't find it on any of the board agendas for Berkeley, Dorchester One or Two, or Colliton County, all of whom, all of which their superintendents signed the document that you sent us. So I just would like to keep that in mind, that we have to coordinate with those districts, but we're not sure if they're participating yet either. I, one of the superintendents explained that they have different governance arrangements with their, their, their boards than we, when I explained why I could not sign the documents. I, I don't know what the other districts' governance arrangements are. I just knew that this board asked for me to bring this back to you for approval. So that's what I've done.
Ms. Green?
I'm good. No questions. Thank you.
She says she's not.
I just want to say that I think it's a great idea. I'd just like to have more information. Maybe just to see how it's laid out, answer some of the questions that I may have that might include a program. And, and the way we lay out a program includes the components, the educational components, offerings, all of that, maybe in just a sheet or something, and maybe a sample budget or something. So if you see how this looks like before we make a final commitment to the program. I think it's a great idea.
All right, Ms. Hederick, call the question, please.
Call the question. Yes. Let's make the motion forward. Yeah.
You might just, she wasn't, you might just call on her.
Ms. Green?
I am not getting the option to vote online, but my, my response is yes.
Thank you, Ms. Green. That must have passes. Thank you. Okay, item 4C, this is information only, a rubric for school-specific waivers.
When Norton, when North Charleston High School made its initial presentation on wanting to apply for the state for waivers, the question came up on what would be our system for evaluating this option? Because we did want to make sure that any school principal who has an innovative idea, who wants to enhance their program and feels like the regulations are getting in the way, has an opportunity to do this. So Ms. Hederick asked me to come up with a rubric within Learning Services that would inform our recommendations to the board around schools applying. This is just a, a headline on the rubric so you all can get a sense of what we would be looking for. Essentially, the key thing is to what extent is this strategy, the use of the waiver, critical to improving student achievement? Or, and that we define that broadly, both academic achievement and social-emotional health. How, how will the school know that it's working? And what time will they monitor it? And is there a plan for reporting back regularly? So.
Thank you. Do we have any questions around that, Ms. Coats? Ms. Waters? Dr. Frazier? Dr. French?
My only question would be, it might be good to make sure that there's some step in the process to investigate whether or not the waiver is actually needed to accomplish the goal. Because sometimes there are things that are already allowed.
That's right. That's a good point, ma'am. We will add that. It's kind of built into our process anyway with Ms. Roberts. Does that work? But let's make it explicit.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
No ques, no questions. Thanks.
Reverend Mack? Thank you, Ms. Belcher.
Thank you.
The last item up is the informational item on the board's support of the CCSD settlement with the U.S. Civil Rights Division.
That, thank you. This was a board suggested item by Dr. French and Mrs. Cokely. As it's a shared priority with Learning Services, Michelle English-Watson will represent Learning Services, and then the communications team, Erica, will represent for that.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Dr. Reverend Mack, Vice Chair Ms. Waters, Board of Trustees, these members, and Superintendent Dr. Postaway. May we, what, thank you. CCSD, and just to give you a background before we actually get into the meat of the Department of Justice settlement, we currently serve three, 5,530 multilingual learners, students who speak over 70 different languages at home. Over the last five years, the number of MLS have grown by nearly 25%. While we do serve an immigrant population, the majority of this growth comes from students born in this country who arrive in the system not speaking English. Currently, CCSD has allocated staff members across the system who serve these students specifically. 62 English as a second language teacher, ESO-L teachers, 2.6 bilingual parent advocates, four bilingual teaching assistants, and six bilingual secretaries in our highly populated schools. Our challenge. Next slide, please. Because the population grew so fast, as a district, we fell behind in ensuring families of students that had access to key communications from the district and from their child's school. In an investigation, the Department of Justice found that we needed to provide adequate translation or oral interpretation services to limited English proficient, LEAP, parents, guardians, including in the context of special education-related matters. As a district, we agreed to address this challenge in a consent agreement, which will be monitored very closely by the Department of Justice over the next three years. Next slide, please. What are our strategies to improve the communications, to address those, to address what was cited in the agreement? We must notify LEAP parents and guardians in a language they understand of their right to request interpretation and translation services, how to make such requests, and how to file a complaint about language access services. We must ensure district and school-related essential information is communicated to LEAP families in a language they can understand. And when speaking with LEAP families, we must communicate in their home language through a qualified interpreter. And that will be someone who's taken the course and have now become certified to provide such services. What are some of our priorities? Next slide, please. We are doing the following in order to be able to improve communications with our families, with our ML families. Recruiting qualified interpreters and translators. Improving how we document LEP families in our data system so that administrators and teachers will know when families may need interpretation or translation services. Tracking all requests for interpretation and translation services at the district and school levels so we may better plan and provide services for our families. Providing professional development for all employees in CCSD on best practices for communicating with LEAP families before school starts in August. Hire a project manager, which we've already done, to respond to staff and LEAP families' family requests for translation or interpreter services, and to help us move along in addressing the corrective actions as outlined in the statement and the agreement. And establishing, have notified our parents of the designated telephone number and email address for questions. So we've already established a telephone number and an email address, and we've already notified our parents for how, for making such requests. Ms. Taylor, want to talk about our next steps?
Thank you, Ms. English-Watson. So as it relates to our proposed next steps, they are as follows. We're going to create an office of translation services, and that office will sit within the Division of Strategy and Communications. The purpose of the office is to do a few things. One is to proactively translate all school and The purpose of the office is to do a few things. One is to proactively translate all school and district communications. Secondly, we plan to connect our limited English proficient families, our LEP families, and CCSD staff who are needed to translate, or if there is a need for interpretation services. We plan to resolve any questions or concerns that our families have. And most importantly, we will monitor and we will track the requests for translation and interpreter services so that we can budget and plan accordingly to anticipate our future needs. We will add translation and interpretation capacity to the Department of Exceptional Children to facilitate IEP and 504 meetings. Currently, there are four hundred and thirty-eight students who fall within those categories, and they speak fifteen different primary home languages. We will also expand the number of school-based bilingual secretaries. Currently, there are approximately six bilingual secretaries, and we hope to increase that number to twelve. We will look to increase the budget for contracted services to include language line to support families who speak a language other than English or Spanish. And there are more than eighty different home languages that are spoken by CCSD students and their families. And we will partner with work-based learning to create opportunities for our families to train for translator, interpreter, or ESOL teaching positions in CCSD. Maggie, would you please advance to the next slide? This is just a screenshot of what our website looks like for current, what it currently looks like now, so that if there are any families who need any support, this is where they can find directions to receive such. Also listed is a telephone number and an email address, which Ms. English-Watson shared. And in closing, I would like to acknowledge the, the team who's been working very diligently on this work. Um, Ms. English-Watson, who you know, I'm Ms. Beverly Hope Pilkey. She's our Executive Director of Exceptional Children. Ms. Robin Jones, who's the Exceptional Director of Instructional Programs. Mr. Chris Hagie, who is our ESOL coordinator, and he's in the room. And Lauren Crawford, who's our project manager, and she's right, right, right behind me. And with that, we will pause and ask that you accept this briefing and allow any questions if there are any.
Thank you all so much. Ms. Coats?
So this is informational.
Yes.
Board does not have to take any action for itself. Excellent job. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Waters, do you have any question? Ms. Darby?
Yeah.
Dr. Frazier?
Yes, will we provide any classes to any of our staff that may may take to help them to better understand how to relate to our families? Like professional development courses?
For parents or staff? Um, at, at this time, not, but I can tell you that there are a number of CCSD staff who are being trained to be certified interpreters or translators so that if they're currently working within the district and there is a, if there's an interest in, in supporting this specific effort, we are providing the opportunity for them to be certified, trained interpreters and translators.
And also in the Title I, Department, we do offer English, Spanish for English-speaking, for our teachers, our staff today. And we also offer English for our families who speak Spanish as a course as well. So we do fund those courses in, uh, in the fall and September. Of course, we didn't this year because of COVID. Uh, but we'll be looking forward to starting it up next year again. And we've been offering that for, oh my God, fifteen years now. So yeah.
Thank you. Dr. French?
Uh, yes, thank you so much for this update on what you're already doing to, to resolve the situation. It's, I know it's a lot of work. Um, I understand from reading the, uh, the settlement agreement that we also need to look at our policy manual and make sure it's up to date, and I would be happy to work with you as policy liaison on that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Ms. Green?
No questions.
Reverend Mack?
No question.
Thank you. That closes our section out.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ms. Draper. We have lots to do there. Thank you, everybody. All right, next is item five A, Audit and Finance Committee Meeting Review. Ms. Green?
Um, the, the, the items listed, of course, are there. And they are, specific information is provided on board docs, um, under audit and finance. And so, you know, which is, uh, what we typically do is take these to the board. But if anybody has any questions, um, you could certainly ask your questions. Or if you don't have questions for this meeting, you can contact me or, um, Mr. Kennedy about any questions on the agenda items.
All right, since you are, can I elaborate on that just a tiny, tiny bit? Ms. Green?
Pardon?
Can I elaborate just a little bit since you're not here in the meeting room? In our board, a couple of board members were saying, hey, it might be nice sometimes to have a little bit more discussion on some of these in-depth items. So I said to them, feel free, if there is something that's on the audit and finance list that you want us to talk about, you know, that's why it's there. So if anybody-
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I, I guess my only caution, I have no problem with that. My only caution is, you know, um, the, the items that come to, has already been vetted by one committee. And, you know, so, you know, not a problem with, with any discussion or any questions because a lot of those issues are very important. So if, if somebody does have a question that, um, you know, we need to discuss, I mean, certainly by all means, just raise it and we will discuss it.
Yes.
Does anybody have a question?
Yes, I have a question. I, I have a question about the Audit and Finance Committee. How do we go about selecting members of that committee? And I remember in the last, um, meeting, there was a recommendation by a staff member um, to have a new person added to that committee. How does that work? And how do we accommodate new people who want to be on that committee?
So I can only respond as, as per policy. The committee is, consists of six people, four that are selected from the community, two from board members, and the chair of the board and, um, uh, appoints those two, um, members, and the board agrees to them. Um, you know, the vote on them. And as far as the community members, um, it's done through a solicitation of interest and, um, vetted by the Audit and Finance Committee with recommendations to the full board and, um, approved or not approved by the full board.
If you don't mind, Dr., I mean, Ms. Green, I'll just, the, the policy is in policy BDE that, about how that's appointed, so we can-
I, I saw that in the policy, but the policy was not followed when the recommendation was made, and that's why I brought the question.
The policy was not what now?
The policy states that the person recommended should be recommended by a member of the committee and not by staff. But in the last appointment, it was recommended by staff.
Um, it, they, the policy says citizens wishing to serve on the Audit and Finance Committee will submit a letter of interest in a resume and or application to the Chief Financial Officer. The letter of interest must specify whether the applicant seeks the feet received, received for the individual with information, technology, expertise. All applications will be reviewed by the Audit and Finance Committee, and the committee will submit its nominee to the board for approval, the vice chair, or blah, blah, blah. So the part that you're talking about, that's-
Yes, that was not called.
So, Dr., Ms. Green, Dr. Frazier says that particular piece was not followed.
And I think, um, she may be, uh, she may be a hundred percent correct. Um, Dawn and I had conversation about that, and we are, uh, following practice. So, um, uh, I mean, it may be that, um, the recommendation should have come from the committee. I can say that, um, the Audit and Finance Committee had all of the resumes ahead of time. Uh, we discussed whether anybody had any other nominees other than one that was recommended by, by staff. And, um, if we need to regroup on this, we can. Otherwise, I would say, you know, we will just, in the future, if we have a vacancy, we'll make sure that, uh, staff, um, does not make a nomination. Um, and we'll just ask the committee if they would just make a nomination. But that was just based on what has happened in the past, not that it's right. Um, and your point is well taken.
Ms. Green, when is, what's up?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Ms. Green, when is that name coming before the board for consideration?
Um, it, it is on the board's agenda now, uh, for the, for the next meeting.
On the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, it's coming forth on the twenty-sixth. Okay, all right.
Does anybody else have any questions about the audit, or Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to make a, a point on the selection of the, um, committee members. So my interpretation was that, uh, certainly, I made the recommendation to the Audit and Finance Committee, you know, based on the parameters that, um, of what, what the committee is looking for. But the recommendation coming to the, to the full board, uh, is not my recommendation. This is the recommendation of the committee. And so the process that I followed was to, you know, review all of the, the some interest, the resumes, given my, um, my understanding of what the types of, um, positions that are needed on our Audit and Finance Committee. Then I made that recommendation along with all the resumes to the committee, and the committee then adopted that recommendation and making, making that recommendation to the full board. So, so I am not making the recommendation to the board.
The recommendation is coming from Audit and Finance. Okay. All right, Dr. French, you have a question?
I just wanted to mention that, uh, the third action item, Phase Five Construction, the analysis was really helpful. I, I attended the meeting, and I think I've encouraged everybody to go over that before the next meeting, because I think it's probably a pretty good proposal for us to consider.
Good. Anybody else have any other questions for either of us? Green?
I just have one other question, uh, Ms. Green. Those committee members who are on that committee, how long do they serve? And when do those members roll off that committee? Is there anything in that, uh, document that shows that they served for two years? And then we start looking at, uh, new members? Or how does that work?
I think the policy spells that out, and Dawn helped me on the, uh, you, are you referring to the committee member, um, the community members?
Yes.
Or the board members? The community members. I think they serve for a term of two years and can be reappointed if they're still interested in staying on. But Dawn, correct me if I'm right on that. I don't have the policy right in front of me.
So you are-
But it is spelled out in the policy.
So you are correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, next item is item five A, Policy Stuff.
Okay, yes, so policy. Um, before we get into the policy GBGAA, um, I just want to say, as the board's policy liaison, I feel like I need to bring up something that happened last week. It's, I think it's my responsibility to discuss with you when items or issues related to communication or interpretation of board policies are brought to my attention. The staff member notified me that an email was sent out with a, I think it's called Policy Spotlight.
If, Dr. French, if it's not on the agenda-
I, I think I really need to bring this up because the information that was provided was not accurate.
Okay, Dr. French, hold on a sec. We have our parliamentarian here, and he can perhaps even consult with you privately, so you can see. But if it's not on the agenda, so let's get some advice from him about how we should handle.
So as policy liaison, I don't have any, any rights like the chair does? Uh-uh.
Board meeting is not, we just have to put it on the agenda. We can't discuss something that's not on this agenda.
So we can, we can talk after this about how to get it on that agenda?
Only thing on policy is, but and the reason for that is because you want to have the public understanding of what we want to discuss at the meeting so they can come and listen and have some, 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 they're going to be able to address it. But we can't get calls in the middle of the week, the day before the meeting, and come to the meeting and discuss that issue because it's not on the agenda, and that violates our state statute. That's the reason for that.
Okay, I only wanted to bring it up because it was a misinterpretation of the policy.
I understand. I'm not saying it's not important, Dr. French.
Okay.
I'm just saying for procedural matters, we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda.
All right, then I'll move on to Pol- Policy GBGAA. This is a update of our accommodation for breastfeeding mothers. And, um, Ms. Hamm prepared this for us before she left her position. She, um, has brought the policy to align better with state law. She also did a lot of work with operations staff to make sure that we could accommodate the needs in the best way possible for, uh, lactating mothers. So I appreciate the staff's help with that. Um, I'd like to entertain, entertain a motion to approve the first reading of that policy.
Motion to approve the first reading. Back to you.
Sir, are there any questions? Start with Ms. Waters? Thank you, Ms. Darby.
No questions. Thank you.
Dr. Frazier? Ms. Draper?
No question.
Ms. Green?
No question.
Ms. Coats? Reverend Mack?
No question.
All right, then I'll call the question. Or call for the vote. May I ask the parliamentarian a quick question?
So, and I've, oh, I'm sorry, but I was just going to say I vote yes because I still am not able to vote online.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Sure.
Um, it's just a procedural question about call. Is call question the appropriate thing, or does that institute a separate vote before you, the motion? Got you. Got you. Okay, thank you. And that's all the policy items that we have today.
Okay, all right. The, um, next item is six A, which is the legislative update.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Butler. I'm an associate with the Campbell Consulting Group. Um, and I'm here on behalf of Darryl Campbell today. So, uh, without further ado, I'll just get right into our legislative update. It's going to be very brief. Um, just last week, we completed week fourteen of, uh, legislative session. And session is, is set to conclude on May thirteenth, Thursday, May thirteenth. Uh, so that gives us about four weeks left in the session. Now, last week, uh, the Senate Finance Committee began their budget committee work, and they are expected to, uh, complete that work this week and, and will hopefully have the budget ready on the floor to discuss and debate on Monday, April twenty-sixth, uh, which is next Monday. Um, and usually that process will happen, uh, before session concludes. But since this is a different year, again, with the pandemic and, and, uh, different factors of this fluid, uh, state revenue, um, forecast going on, uh, that, that budget process we are hearing is going to be delayed, uh, from being completed until about June. Senate Finance Committee and House Ways and Means Committee have both indicated that they'll be, they'll be completing that work in June. So, um, just, I'll take you back about a week and a half ago, maybe now. We have what we call our, our legislative crossover deadline. So any bills that did not make this crossover deadline, um, do not have the best chance of passing this legislative year. And for example, a Senate bill that, you know, originated in the Senate, if it did not pass that crossover deadline, which was Thursday, April eighth, then, um, it would need a, a House majority vote, two-thirds vote, to be taken up and passed this year, which is not- which is not impossible, but highly unlikely. So uh that'll that'll segue right into legislative bills of interest uh for you all as as far as crossover goes. So um like I just said in my example, S two O two is a uh is a bill, an expected general bill, state inspector general bill. That bill um did not make crossover uh and it allows the state inspector general to begin investigations into uh school districts, um public schools. And like I said, the the bill did not make crossover this year. And that is because Senator Camson uh placed his name in objection to the bill. But just in more detail, the uh the state inspector general bill um would allow the state inspector general to start these investigations um at the request of the governor or at the request of the state superintendent, uh at the request of a local superintendent who makes that request to the state superintendent, a majority uh vote by the legislative delegation or a majority vote by a a local school board. And um the state inspector general doesn't currently have that authority to investigate or audit local government entities, so municipalities, counties. And so Senator Camson kind of wants to to keep it that way and that's why he placed his name in objection to the bill. So um as I said, not impossible, but highly unlikely that bill will pass this legislative year. Um and it will be uh most likely taken up and heard from again next next year. So uh bills that did make crossover and have a higher possibility of of passing this legislative session would be uh S seven O four, which is a bill that requires all school districts to return to five day in-person learning um starting next Monday, April twenty sixth. And it also would allow uh the suspension of the earnings limitation uh for those who have retired before April first, twenty nineteen. Um would allow them to come back and work up to fifty thousand dollars. And that bill will receive third reading in the House as amended and returned to the Senate with amendment. So um we expect that the Senate will most likely concur with those maybe as soon as tomorrow um to get the ball rolling on that and and have that passed this week. And um another bill of interest to you all in here would be H thirty-five eighty-nine Schools of Innovation. The bill was appointed to a conference committee last week. Uh and conference committee, for those that may not know, is just uh the House, the Speaker of the House appointed three members of the House and um the Senate President did the same in the Senate. And they all went to a conference committee on the bill to work out their differences in language because uh both bodies insisted on their language for the bill. So um they worked their differences out and the adopted conference report shows that schools of innovation are eligible to be exempt from certain state laws and regulations and local board policies if approved by two thirds of the State Board of Education. It requires schools to disclose the financial model regarding how a school receives and expends funds. Districts cannot designate all schools as schools of innovation. Reapproval must occur every three years and schools cannot discontinue or schools can discontinue their their contract as schools of innovation whenever they so choose. So uh the House adopted the conference committee report uh on that on that bill and we expect the Senate to do the same tomorrow. And once it is ratified, it will go to the governor's desk for his approval. And um most of the or all of these bills and others uh we get into a lot more detail with our our weekly legislative report that we we send out each week. But I'm happy now to answer any questions you all may have.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the legislative report? Oh, we did a fabulous job. We don't have any questions. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is just um School Boards Association. Ms. Coats, do you want to comment on all that requests for us for the future?
Um you, um I'm sorry, you didn't ask me to make any comments. I don't have any. Sorry.
Okay, it looks like the School Boards Association is just they are being way a little bit ahead of time asking for nominations um and proposals for next year's legislative session. So take a look at that. And then uh Reverend Matt, you want to talk about the the board meeting schedule?
Uh so we we do this annually, adopting the schedule for uh the assuming year uh school year. So it has been included in your packet. Uh hopefully everyone has had an opportunity to review them uh straightforward uh for the committee to hold and the regular scheduled board meeting.
I've approved the proposed scheduled board meetings for the twen- through July twenty twenty-one through July, June twenty twenty-two.
Okay, do we have a second? Alright, we have a motion from Ms. Coats and a second from Ms. Waters. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, Dr. French?
Yes, I I was a a little concerned to see so many months where we're combining the COW and the board meeting. And then I know that that's something that happens during certain times of the year. But I I have been under the impression that we have a lot of work to do this summer. And I'm also concerned about the combination of the two meetings in April of next year when we'll be talking about the budget, you know, the upcoming budget. So I'm wondering if we could reconsider those um or if you could explain.
So when you do look at those, uh so let's go to December. Generally, with with the two meetings falling, it will fall during the Christmas holiday break. So you see the committee to hold and regular board meeting being combined together as one. And then in April uh twenty fifth, uh the combining of those meetings, of course, is due to spring break and where the calendar uh falls with the schedule of our COW and our regular board meetings. So uh that's where we have to allow opportunities for staff to gather information and data when these agenda put together, the packet, to put together the timeframe, to get it to us, to study it, to review it and to be able to meet. So all of that come into play when uh the schedule is put together or when these committee uh committee meetings or and board meetings are combined together into one.
Um well, I realize that, but part of the issue from from my perspective is we have spring break this year and and we do every year, but there's four weeks in the month. And so it seems like we could accommodate two meetings. And I'm concerned that when you combine the two meetings into one day, you don't have time to consider the information and reflect on it before you approve it at the board meeting, which is what I thought separating the two meetings was for.
So, you know, it's just three three times out of a calendar school year. And again, it gives us an opportunity. We have the packet, we have the information. Our job actually for every COW and every regular board meeting is to make sure that we study uh the packet information, research it, uh and we have a lot of uh opportunities for questions to be asked between the timeframe. So so it's not that we're consistently doing this. It's because of the calendar that we approve and the timeframe in which it falls. Um so, you know, a- again, not only is that is the case, and I have to go back to the fact that and the research and the data and information that is compiled by staff to research together that information, to put the packet together or to put the data together for us to have time to study it and have the that time to absorb it and be able to uh come back with questions prior to this. So so these are done three times out of the year and I, you know, it's it's just one of those uh opportunities to uh really be able to uh uh be able to reach the point of of getting the work done within that timeframe.
Yeah, I understand your point of view. I guess I just feel like there's also an opportunity for us to get feedback. And from what I've been, what I've learned recently is we're not providing very much information on the public side of our board agenda for the community to know what we're going to talk about at the COW. And so they don't know until it's presented to us at the COW. And if they have concerns, you know, when the meetings are on the same day, it's a lot more difficult for them to get those concerns to us quickly.
And and I hear what you're saying. Yeah, I guess so. But it's just one of those rare opportunities that we do have uh these combined meetings.
Move a question.
Okay, the question's been called. Uh so Julie, can we go ahead and? Oh, you already have it. That's right, I was listening.
And I vote uh yes, Ms. Darby.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, that motion passes. Um the next item is the fiscal year twenty SWMB report and summer facilities expenditure. I think one of our board members asked about this at a previous meeting. Um it has been uh forwarded to the board in October and was recent in January. Um the report is attached and unless somebody has any specific questions, uh we can review that attach those attached documents. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Okay, um the next item under six E is the one day board. Oh, sorry.
And I always ask you this at every board meeting, how are we coming along with the uh that committee who's supposed to be reporting back to the board on on the SWMB report? That committee, who are we getting back and where are we with that process?
So as I, sorry, so as I reported last Wednesday, I think it was at the uh the board workshop on procurement, uh that that committee is meeting once a month. We don't meet this month until next, or maybe this Wednesday, but we have not met since we had the meeting last week. The last meeting that we had was prior to uh spring, spring break back in March. And so um the committee will the uh conclude its work sometime in the next couple of months or so and then bring us out a recommendations uh to the board, through the Audit and Finance Committee.
Thank you. Alright, the next item is six E, the one day board retreat workshop. Reverend Matt?
Yeah, so you will find uh they have a retreat that has been set up to have a facilitator to come in to do a uh half day workshop with us uh on board governance. Uh we have a proposed date of May twenty-six. You know, having a lunch from twelve to one and then the workshop from one to four thirty. Um and this is just one of um hopefully several retreat workshop that we have planned.
Okay, any? Yep.
Reverend Matt?
Yes.
When can we get items to you that we would like to have included in this retreat?
So this this initial retreat will be one of a magnitude of where the facilitator will actually call each board member. So you have an opportunity uh to have a one-on-one conversation with the facilitator. And once the interview has been done with every uh board member, he will put together a scope of I'm planning in uh having a retreat workshop set up. So uh you'll have as much time as you want. Is that okay?
Start your last.
So whatever whatever you want to uh say to the facilitator, you can say to him. And uh and when we all have the retreats, then he'll he'll uh facilitate a workshop recording. We have. Yes.
Dr. French?
Yeah, just to follow up the, will it be a workshop where we're having a discussion or will it be presentation and?
Uh no, it'll be around table discussion. Absolutely. Yes, yes.
Reverend Matt, I just asked that because expenses always matter, that that AJ be here one night. We can eat, you know, most speakers of that nature that come in and going, you know, this when you're in Hilton Head, they come in for one night and leave, but let's make sure that we organize that way so that we make these expenses as low as possible.
So actually, there's really no cost but the exception of travel for us.
That's what I was talking about, that that they are plane ticket in the hotel.
So which is which is when you when you talk about bringing in a facilitator or so such of a of a scope of a magnitude, you you incur way more expenses uh than you would do with just bottom line, just uh uh travel expenses. So it is at bare minimum for this actual retreat. So yeah, we did take that into consideration.
That it will be a one night stay? You haven't actually answered my question.
I mean, I think if that's possible.
I I'm assuming that it will be an overnight stay, of course, because he's traveling from um from a distance.
Location?
Texas.
I'm sorry.
Location.
He's coming from Texas.
Location for our.
Workshop, it will be here.
But can we be like, we can spit more casually?
Fancy it up.
I I assure you, we will.
Fancy it up.
Well, you know, just keep in mind, we're we're still, you know, we're still in COVID and uh but we'll make sure that it's spread out to where uh everyone will be able to indulge and we'll have uh lunch, you know, provided uh so and snacks.
Okay, any?
Let's name it a workshop. Let's just just name this state retreat up and just name it workshop.
It's just the building, that's all.
Alright, any other questions or input? Okay, so under F, catch me if I'm wrong.
Uh we need to vote on it.
I'm sorry, do we need to vote on that? Okay.
What are we voting on? Just to have the workshop on?
On May twenty-third.
So moved.
Second, second.
Question?
Good, so what you, we have a question. Yeah, question?
And I guess I might move the answer to this. Will this include uh you know, families and everyone else who want to be a part of this? Do we have to include the press and everyone else who? Is there a way to get around that?
Yep, yeah, no form, so less than four, I mean, four people are allowed. Okay, so we'll have to vote on that.
So um yeah, that's fine.
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, that motion passes. Alright, so next we're determining our agenda items that moving to potential consent, I think, but correct me if I'm wrong, item four A on C. Williams. Do we have unanimous vote on that?
No.
Yeah. We did, we just.
Four A was unanimous.
Four A was unanimous. Okay, so four E, five B, the policy GB GAA. We had unanimous, then item six E, the board meeting dates. That wasn't unanimous. Okay, so not sixty, sixty, and then item six E. So it'll be four A, five B, and six E.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Um for policy, all four items coming out of Audit and Finance were unanimous, so they go to potential consent as well.
Okay, um whichever, the items coming out of Audit and Finance go to consent as well. So just can I have a motion to that effect?
Doesn't require a motion.
Okay, don't count on here's motion. Yes. Okay, so can I have a motion to move item four A, five B, six E and the action items from Audit and Finance to the potential consent agenda for the board meeting?
So I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Okay, alright.
Question, what if the motion fails? I mean, I I I'm just thinking that as we make the agenda, I understand the need to follow the agenda.
So we'll fix that for the future.
Right, yeah, okay. So can we go ahead and vote?
Yeah, any questions? Any questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote. And Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, let's hope that she will.
Yeah, yes, actually, he hadn't been sitting up here because of COVID, but this has been the standard practice for multiple years.
Need, we like it better too. Okay, that motion passes and just the net, the upcoming meetings are listed on your agenda and can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Uh, second, call in favor, say something, hi. All right, so don't go anywhere because we're having a special call meeting.
Is there a different link for this meeting?
No, I think you can just stay on that.
Okay.
How long are we breaking?
Uh, three minutes.
Yeah, we can't vote in executive session so we...
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, do we need to make a motion?
Motion? I thought... You don't need to make a motion.
You can't really vote. You can't vote.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, all right. Item 4A, student placement appeal.
I've got a motion, Rover Mack.
Okay.
I move that we uphold the constituent board's decision.
Second?
Properly moving second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, would you please pass your vote? Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. There we go.
Ms. Green, your vote came across three times.
Huh?
Huh?
I'm sorry, I'm having lots of technical difficulties here today, so please...
No worries, we truly get your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Item 4B.
I've got a motion.
Okay.
I move that in lieu of expulsion, we refer the student to the IEP team for placement consideration.
I would like to ask one question.
Okay, properly moving second. Ms. Coates?
And I'm not sure if they're here, so, is this... Does this work for the staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions? Hearing none, would you please pass your vote? Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Ms. Coakley was not in attendance in the meeting today. Dr. French?
Should the record reflect that item 2C was taken off?
I'm about to go to that right now.
Well, I'm sorry.
That's all right. All right, that motion passes. Also, on item 4C, there were no personnel matter discussed in executive session. Entertainer Moen for adjournment?
They're moved.
This meeting now is adjourned.